Welcome to the June 23rd, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus. Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Vaughn, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
All right, can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there's a problem, please speak up immediately so the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Excellent, thank you. This brings us to information for the board, Dr. Vaughn.
A few items I'd like to just update the board on and the community who might be watching. First, appreciate the time that you set aside for the work session tonight for our community. We had a conversation about where we stand in terms of the bond issue and potentially going forward with that, and also what our operating finances look like moving forward. And so, at this point, the bond issue looks to be, and again, with each day that sort of gets closer to July, we get a little bit closer to locking these numbers, but we're looking at a 3.95 mil bond issue for a new high school on the Parma Senior High Campus. That bond issue would cost the owner of a $100,000 home $11.52 per month, and obviously you can multiply off of that. We will, if we vote to actually go ahead with the bond issue, we'll put a mileage calculator on a website so people can calculate their exact amount, or at least a chart so you can get pretty close. So, again, the cost is $11.52 per $100,000, and that's for the new high school. Subsequent buildings will come upon receipt of money from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, which, as we've detailed often, they can't promise us a date on that, but they do promise us it will happen. So tonight, what you see are sort of a series of resolutions that are lining up the ability to go forward. It's important to really help the public understand that none of these resolutions that you'll see tonight relevant to the bond issue actually commit us to going forward, and so your board isn't voting on any one issue that says, yes, the bond issue's on. However, if we don't get the right paperwork in line, we won't be able to go on at all. So, this is lining everything up with that hope that we will move forward. So that was first. Second, on a lighter note, much lighter note, we are very thrilled to have Byersfield movie nights again this year, starting first Thursday in July, which would be the seventh. I think they're all multiples of seven. And the community is welcome. These are partnerships with our city governments as well, in terms of being able to have some different food options there. We really have been committed to making sure our community assets are just that, are not just school assets, they're community assets, available to anyone to use. We know we've been committed to having walking nights in our high schools, and Easter egg hunts, skating night, which was in partnership with Parma Recreation, and we're excited to do movies tonight. It should be a great tradition that we look forward to really continuing throughout the years. This will be the second year that we're doing it, and look forward to hopefully a great community participation. Byersfield is a true asset, and we're happy to be able to share it with our neighbors.
That concludes this evening. Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. And that brings us to communications. Mrs. Carpus is not here, but does anyone have anything communication-wise, anything? Mr. Nusio, do you have something?
I do, I.
All right, so we can probably move way along here. Do we have any amendments tonight?
Three, we have.
Three, so that would be.
There's two that go on to the related to the board.
All right, so I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-228, adoption of amendments.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two. Did you say eight?
I would say eight.
Oh, okay. 2022-06-228. Any questions or comments from the board? Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-06-228 has been approved. All right, thank you. Public participation. All right. So I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-229, approval of the written record of proceedings from June 8th, 2022, special, and June 9th, 2022, regular and special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-229. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-06-229 has been approved. That brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Brats.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-230, approval of overnight out-of-state field trip.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-230. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-230 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-06-231, approval for foreign exchange student from Kazakhstan to attend Parma Senior High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-231. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-231 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-06-232, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with service-based agencies for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-232. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-232 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-233, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with various educational facilities during the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-233. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-233 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-06-234, authorizing purchase of musical instruments from Sweetwater Sound.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-234. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
And Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-234 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss this evening, that will conclude curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Brats. This brings us to business, Mr. Ruda.
Thanks. I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-235, the authorizing to dispense with competitive bidding requirements and award a contract under a co-op program for Byersfield synthetic turf replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-235. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I just make a comment? Just want people to understand that this is not that we just blindly accepted somebody's offer. We are part of Keystone Purchasing Network, and we entered into that sort of a co-op to make sure that we do get the best prices. So they actually are the ones who bet the prices. I know when it's just a dispensive bidding, it sounds like it's, wait a minute, we're supposed to take bids for anything above $50,000. It's the co-op that has already done that for us, and so that's why you see this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Also, it's not for this coming school year, it's the following school year. So once after graduation is done next year, that's when I plan on starting replacement. So it's not for the 22-23 school year, the following school year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No, okay. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-235 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-236, the authorizing of relocation of dark fiber hub.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-236. Any questions or comments from the board? Where is it currently?
Here.
Here?
Yeah, so we need to move it in preparation for consolidation.
Got you. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-236 has been approved.
I move to, I'm sorry, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-237, authorizing award of bid for Valley Forge High School roof rehabilitation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-237. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can add, I just think it underscores the need for investment in our facilities in terms of new, we continue to, and that's an awful lot of money to spend for part of a roof at Valley Forge, which is over 60 years old.
That's not the part there, it was blown off the other day.
It's not, no.
Couple months ago.
About a year and a half ago. Yeah, no, that's been repaired already.
Is that a year and a half ago?
It's November of '21, November 20.
Seems like yesterday.
Yeah. This age thing is getting to me. All right, anybody else? Okay, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-237 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-238, authorizing purchase of Xerox Versant 4100-colored digital press.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-238. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none.
Yeah, I just, you know, again, first of all, we get as many years out of these machines as we possibly can, and like anybody knows, Dan Salum knows, he's pretty thorough in his use and vending of machines. This is the press that is a little bit higher quality and actually gets used less, so they've looked a lot at, you know, should we buy, should we lease, and so we're actually buying the one, if you think of a car, like my wife has a nicer car, she just does. It gets used less, so we buy hers, right? And then we lease mine because it's all the miles back and forth, and so that's kind of how to look at this. We're buying the better machine because we'll be able to get longer out of it. In terms of the ones that we really just sort of are beaters, you know, we're actually going to lease those, and that's your next resolution.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Mr. Nusio, please.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-238 has been approved.
I move to, excuse me, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-239, authorizing lease agreement for four Xerox B9100 copier printers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-239. Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Vaughn kindly explained this already, so it'll be good. So, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-239 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-240, authorizing renewal of property comprehensive liability, school leaders' errors and omissions in fleet and automobile liability insurance policy.
Second.
That was very lengthy. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-240. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment.
It's routine, right?
Well, actually, we're changing insurance agents. So Liberty Mutual will continue to be, come on, everybody wants me to do it, right? Liberty Vividity?
Yeah.
Will continue to be our insurance provider, but we have found an agent which we think will be more responsive, and actually, that agent has already found a way to cut our costs by $6,000 per year because that agent is a little bit hungrier for our business and has looked through sort of the Xs and Os of our contract a little bit more dutifully than our former folks who may have started to take us for granted a little bit.
Nice.
Very nice, excellent. Good job, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-240 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-241, declaration of intent to identify Parma High, Parma?
Identify high school.
High school as phase one of Parma City School District construction project.
Second.
Hold on, hold on. Time out.
Is there a miswording?
Your notes have been wrong because of the length of getting this.
Okay, resolution, is it the one on?
It's the one that's in board desk.
Okay.
I apologize.
Resolution by the school district board to accept the master facility plan for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission expedited local partnership program. Is that what I wanted?
There you go. Very good.
Second.
Now, we have a second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-241. Any questions or comments from the board? Questions, comments, okay, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-241 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-241.01, resolution of intent expedited local partnership program, half-mill maintenance requirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-241.02. Any questions or comments from the board?
Do you want me to explain that?
Yes, absolutely.
So the OCC wants to make sure that they don't build, or fund, partially fund in our case, schools that don't have revenue streams to maintain them. So they really require that a board of education have one half of a mill set aside to be able to do that. So what this resolution does is push that requirement for us until we would actually receive Classroom Facilities Assistance Program money, CFAP, which means when our turn is up, then we will be able to earmark half of a mill for maintenance of new schools, which I want to make very clear is not in addition to any type of bond issue, it's earmarking of current permanent improvement funds that already exist, just declaring, okay, we would have that $1.3 million set aside for upkeep of new schools.
Thank you. Anybody else, questions, comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-241.02 has been approved.
One.
Sorry, I say, where did I get two from?
Because that's next.
I've always been a forward thinker, sir.
Go ahead.
All right, I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-241.02, approval of expedited local partnership program project agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-241.02. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-241.02 has been approved.
Okay, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to finance, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-06-242, approval of the May 2022 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-242. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-242 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-243, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-243. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-243 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-244, adoption of the 2021-2022 final appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-244. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-244 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-06-245, adoption of 2022-2023 permanent appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-245. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-245 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-06-246, approval of request to advance funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-246. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll comment on this, there's a couple large numbers on this. I'll tell you how this works. Byers Code section 5705.110 says you can't have a negative fund balance. So June 30th, all the grant funds are negative, will be negative unless we advance the money. The reason that is, because you have to spend the money first, put in a request to the Ohio Department of Education for reimbursement, and then they send you the money. You're only allowed to take so much percent of the grant in your request monthly, so you're always going to have negative balances in the grant fund. The large one up there, 507, that's the ESSER fund, that's, we got $32 million, so obviously the request is going to be the largest. And another large one is, I think, the last one, 599, that's another grant, we got DIS equipment, that's a $450,000 request we're putting in for reimbursement, so the two are the large ones. This is typical, we do this at the end of every fiscal year.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-246 has been approved.
I'd like to adopt, move to adopt resolution 2022-06-247, approval of petty cash change funds for FY 2022 and 2023.
Second.
2022, yeah, okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-247. Any questions or comments from the board?
Do we need to actually change that?
No, this is the same as la-
No, the number.
The number.
Number 2000.
Yeah, well, we'll get that corrected, that's it.
Okay, well.
I thought you were asking about the amount.
No, no, whether or not, like it's a real resolution, it is.
We'll get it corrected, it's just there.
All right, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-247 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-06-248, continuation of services with local government services division of the Auditor of State's Office for GAP conversion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-248. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-06-248 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-06-249, a resolution authorizing the preparation and filing of materials in connection with applications for consents pursuant to Section 1, 33.06(c) of the revised code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-249. Any questions or comments from the board?
I want to comment on this. Okay, so this is what I talked about at the 4:30 meeting. This allows us to file paperwork with the Ohio Department of Taxation because there's a 120-day notice we have to give on certain bond issues. This is not saying you guys have to afford and vote against bond issues, strictly saying it's prequalifying, as I described it. If I'm going to buy a house, I'm going to get prequalified. This is the same thing for you guys, you get prequalified if you decide to move forward, buying the house or building a school, you put in the paperwork to move ahead. It's not binding you to do anything.
Very good, thank you for that explanation. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Nusio, roll call.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two four nine has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh six dash two five zero. A resolution to approve and authorize settlement agreements relating to a real property tax complaint or appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five zero. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five zero has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh six dash two five one. Acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five one. Any question or comments from the board? And of course, I'm going to say thank you to these fine people for dominating the department of school district. It's always good that you remember us with your kindness. So thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five one has been approved.
Unless a board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Very good. It's a legislation, so we'll kind of put that to you, Mrs. Brod.
Okay. Tonight, I'd just like to bring to your attention the, this bill that was signed by the governor this past week. It's Ohio House Bill ninety-nine, and it authorizes the arming of school staff in the state of Ohio. And I'm just going to read you a little bit of this so that you understand what's in this particular piece of legislation. Currently, Ohio law prohibits a person from being armed in the school safety zone with the exception of state or federal law enforcement personnel who are authorized to carry deadly weapons and security officers or staff with extensive peace officer training who are employed by a school board and authorized to carry while on duty. On June thirteenth, Governor DeWine signed House Bill ninety-nine, which goes into effect on September twelfth of this year. And it overrules the two thousand twenty-one Ohio Supreme Court decision in Gabbard versus Madison Local School District Board of Education to allow a school employee who has written authorization from the school board to be voluntarily armed in a school safety zone. Provided that the employee completes an initial twenty-four hour training program, the employee submits to an annual criminal records check, the school board notifies the public by whatever means the school regularly communicates that the board has authorized one or more staff members to go armed within its school district, and the employee submits to eight requalification training hours on an annual basis. There are some other things that tell the school board has the opportunity to increase those requirements should they choose to do so. But it also says the school district is not required to arm any employees or allow employees to be armed. So it's a kind of a big deal piece of legislation that we will have a conversation with about in the future as a board, but so that you're aware that that has passed this week.
Thank you. So that means we can't allow, or we don't have to.
Correct.
Right at this moment.
If we choose to vote to do that and allow it, these are minimum requirements based on the law. They are pretty minimal. I'll just, as you mentioned that, I'll just say it's a significant reduction to the previously required seven hundred hours of peace officer training. And a lot of that is weapons training. So so that you're aware, we'll have a conversation in the near future about that.
Just wanted to point out too, they have not actually developed yet that twenty-four hour course, and we are monitoring that. Obviously, legislation has passed, it takes a long time to sort of work its way through any type of, you know, practical measures, like, so what, where's the twenty-four hour course? Like, that's not there yet. So even if you authorized it today, and I'm certainly not saying, we certainly have to have far more conversations, but it's just not something you can stamp your ears in.
It's not, you can't take the course tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Not exactly.
And that's from the Ohio Department of Education is developing that course, I believe.
I don't know.
Yeah, I feel like it's probably more from the, more from the law enforcement.
Yeah.
I would think from the Ohio Patrol, I think, first off.
Yeah, or like places like Parma Army that would do it in conjunction with other train, you know, Stonewall does peace officer training stuff, places like that. So, yeah, it would be, it would be a professional place that helps.
It wouldn't be the Ohio Department of Education teaching the course.
Yeah.
They're going to develop the, in conjunction with these partners. They are going to develop the course.
The minimum, yeah, the minimum.
So that will be, yeah, the minimum, and each district could decide whether or not they want to do it at all and whether or not they have increased requirements.
But I do think that, you know, we obviously need to have further conversation about it.
Right. For sure. Absolutely.
Okay, unless anybody has anything else to discuss about legislation this evening,
that will conclude legislation for this evening, Mr. Vaughn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brod. We're going to go right back at you with Human Resources.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five two. Approval of following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of substitute teacher appointment, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five two. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five two has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five three. Acceptance of certificated required retirements, I'm sorry.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five three. Any questions or comments from the board? Is she not wanting to be recognized, Mr. Dr. Smiley?
Well, I think she sort of got it in after that. So we'll reach out to her and see if she wants to be recognized.
I was just curious. It's nice to think so. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five three has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five four. Confirmation of certificated administrative appointments replacements.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five four. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment if you'd like, absolutely. If you approve, Maria Jingo will be reassigned from a dean of students position at Parma High School, Parma Senior High School, to a assistant principal position. She's been the dean there for three years. I think very highly of Maria, as does Mr. Satell and her colleagues. What I think most highly about Maria is that she was an outstanding teacher before she was an administrator, and I always think that that's such a really critical part of being a great administrator is being able to sort of still understand, you know, what happens in the classroom. She performed at an extremely high level, and she's been a great part of the Parma Senior High administrative team, and so we know this transition will go well. She is taking the place of Mr. Garrish. Mr. Garrish resigned to go to Cardinal Middle School, where he will be the principal. Mr. Garrish was also a very valued member of our team. We'll certainly miss him, but Maria steps in to, and really has had great experience as she makes that transition. I finally also want to point out that, you know, this is all about watching, you know, that last year of a five-year forecast. So we will not actually replace Ms. Jingo, so that's actually an administrative reduction. And we will continue to be as fiscally responsible as possible. Certainly, Parma Senior High would love to have a dean back in addition to the team, but we have committed to making sure that we're trimming around the edges, so to speak, without actually cutting into, you know, the core of course offerings and extracurricular opportunities for students. So that is a reduction. But congratulations to Ms. Jingo, we really look forward to her performance in this new role.
That's outstanding. Where do you say that, who's going?
Mr. Garrish was at the school there, and he's going to Cardinal.
Cardinal, Minnesota Cardinal.
As a, yes.
I taught there for five years. Did you really? Uh, second floor of this school, per sense.
Well, we will have him look it up.
Yeah.
His first day.
I'm sure he'll look pretty youthful.
Yeah, I was going to say, send some pictures of him before and after, but it.
It'll be very youthful looking. Looked like I was twelve.
All right. So resolution two, we have a motion and a second, we need to go ahead and roll call Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five four has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five five. Resolution to approve the tentative agreement between the Parma City School District Board of Education and the Parma Education Association.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five five. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment on this one as well. I just want to thank our leadership of the Parma Education Association, certainly led by President Ms. Messinger. This was a really healthy process. We really have a very productive, positive relationship with our teachers association. And quite frankly, if you look at all that we had to endure with COVID, if we were able to make it through COVID and still have, you know, positive, productive relationship with our teachers, I think it really shows the health of our organization. We value their collaboration, we value their perspective, we value their input. This round of negotiations was very consistent with all of the sort of interactions we've had, at least in the last three to four years. And we look forward to continue the collaboration. There are small working condition changes. We have some considerations we're very proud of. For instance, instruction on calamity days past five, which actually were one of the first school districts, certainly in northeast Ohio, to have that resolved in a collective bargain agreement. We also have sort of an innovative pilot where if we have to eliminate a course because there's not enough offering, there's not enough students signing up at one campus, if teachers are willing, we can actually have them sort of broadcasting into another school that's also manned by a monitor. It's not ideal, certainly, we've always said that, we said that they're rebuilding our future, that, you know, teacher at Normandy and kids at Valley Forge isn't the best possible option, but at least it's an option instead of canceling the course. So that's another sort of innovative piece that we're excited about. Very modest wage increases that continue to keep our teachers, unfortunately, below, you know, the median-based salary in Hyoga County. So we certainly didn't break the bank, so to speak, here, but did want to recognize them for their hard work, especially, you know, over the last several years, as we've had ins and outs and at home and not at home. Very grateful for the collaborative spirit, and this is continuation of that perspective, that mindset that we share.
Very good. Glad this was finished.
We are too. It was nice to finish before the summer, actually.
Absolutely. Anybody else? We'll call Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five five has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five six. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five six. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five six has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two oh six two five seven. Acceptance of classified retirement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five seven. Any questions or comments from the board? And again, are we going to reach out to Ms. Slupko here about coming in?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five seven has been approved.
Mr. Vaughn, unless there's another board member that has anything they would like to discuss, that concludes Human Resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Brod, I certainly appreciate it, and takes us to policies, Mr. Rudolph.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution two zero two-two dash zero six dash two five eight. Approval of the following revised policies. Policy two two seven one, college credit plus program, and policy five five one one, dress and grooming.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five eight. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five eight has been approved.
And I move to adopt resolution two zero two-two dash zero six dash two five nine. Approval of technical changes made to the following policies. Policy zero one four two dot oh one point oh one oath. Policy oh one four three, election policy oh one, zero one four four teen. Policy zero one four six, resignation or removal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five nine. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two five nine has been approved.
Okay, these are the first readings. First reading of the following new policies. Policy one six, one six, staff dress and grooming. Basically mirrors the student.
Yeah, they've given some, Neil has given us some options in terms of do we want to sort of affirmatively recognize some different trends in society? And we've decided not to do that, we've decided to have, you know, really a sort of a generic code still that doesn't sort of go into some real specifics about changes that are happening in society.
Okay. And first reading of the following revised policies. Policy three two one six, staff dress and grooming. Revised policy four two one six, staff dress and grooming. Revised policy six one one four, cost principal spending, federal funds. Policy six two three zero, tax budget hearing, and policy three, or seven three zero zero, disposition of real property.
Well, I'm assuming that REB revisions?
They're all revisions, yeah.
Suddenly open.
Yeah, they're not, a lot of changes. Yeah, no.
Nothing or shadow.
They said a lot of the stuff they mirrored what we already had for other staff, and the other ones just followed law.
I guess, so we'll afford them, going into our next meeting.
Okay, so if, unless anybody, any member has anything else, this will conclude policy.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Any information requested by board members? I think so. Does that offer you, do they have questions, or are they on record? We have any? Nothing? All right, I go to one, he's like a second. So I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two six one to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six dash two six one. Roll call, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned.